All right, you're recording.
Does anybody wish to speak from the public on anything on the agenda?
Guess not.
No, I guess not. Okay. Penny, do you have any notes on who took the minutes of the last meeting?
I don't.
Okay. Has anybody from the committee taken the minutes for the last meeting?
I have no idea.
Nobody else is responding. So the question is-
This is, Christina, it's Mark. This is my first meeting, so I don't, I can't say that I have.
When was the last meeting, I think is the question.
February 6th, I think it was.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Oh, right, that was the beginning of budget season.
Yeah. Who would like to take the minutes for this meeting? Mark, you want to give it a shot? Sven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
That's it, pick up the new guy.
Okay.
So long as we're done by, so long as we're done by 6:00, I'm good.
We'll be done by then, trust me.
Long before then, I hope. Okay, going through, going through the minutes, the construction projects, the library was to be before us, but it's been postponed, but it's as good a time as any to talk about how we stand and what we think and anything that you guys would like to discuss.
Well, I guess, so you're saying in reference to the library, Christina?
Yeah, it's the first thing on the agenda, sure.
Okay, and then after that, can we talk about the capital projects that are on board for-
Sure.
Okay.
Does anybody have any comments about the library?
I would like to see the MOU.
Liz, we will. It's just, it's still in draft form and it has got to go to, has to be in a more formal, formalized draft form for discussion that goes to the Board of Finance first. And once it leaves there, it will come to us. It's not being hidden from us or anything. It just has got to go through the process.
Okay, I don't know if it is yet either.
Yeah, it's not ready to go to the Board of Finance because there's still a considerable amount of conversation going on. It's my understanding as to where that stands.
I watched the finance meeting and it seemed that everybody had received the MOU and they were discussing it. And Chris LaBriece went into a summary of what was still being negotiated.
Right. But until, yeah, until the Board of Finance approves, it won't come to us. And since it is in draft form, it is not available to be released.
Yeah, my personal view is that we probably don't need to really talk about it. There, we know what the issues are. And until we have the MOU, it's probably not even worth our time to tackle any of the issues.
Okay.
Unless there were issues that were particularly troublesome to us, Mark, that we want to make sure are in the discussions at that level. Though obviously, if they aren't, when it comes to us, it can be changed again.
Yes, of course.
Right. One of the things that hasn't been discussed, and I brought it up at the last town council meeting, were the additional expenses that the town will incur in terms of the storm drains, the storm lines and the sewer lines needing to be dropped and redone along Main Street. Has anybody heard anything? I guess we might hear an update at the town council meeting.
John did say, when that came up last meeting, he did say that it was the first that they'd heard of it and that they would check it out. So I think that we should anticipate an answer on Wednesday.
Okay.
From John. We might poke him before then to remind him, but-
Why not? Okay. Tom, going on to the next subject, since there's any, no further discussion on the library, town buildings and infrastructure, upcoming projects. Today, we received an email from Rich Townsend listing all the things that are being put in for bonding. From school-
Can you share your screen, please?
I don't know how to put it on the screen. Tom, do you know how to do that?
Does Tom have it?
Yeah, he should have it.
Tom, you're muted.
Sorry, if I had the document, I can pull it up on the screen, but I don't have what you're talking about.
All right, let me forward it.
I, I, yeah, we could forward it to you, Tom.
Send it to my town address.
All right, Liz, are you doing it or you want me to do it?
Yeah, I'll do it because I found it. I just found it, so I'll go ahead right now. So Tom, here it comes. It's an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, let me go pull it up.
Okay, here it comes, pressing send.
Oh, that's the one John sent out or Lundus sent out today?
Well, Rich sent it to us, but who knows where it started.
All right, let me go find it. Hold on. Check my mail here. You go ahead and talk and I'll go find it.
I just, on this list that, it probably originated from Lundus, but on the list, there are projects that we haven't spoken about. And I'm just surprised that they even show up without discussion. But with everything going on with COVID and not being in the town hall, I guess, you know, things like this will happen. But I wanted to know if we should schedule Department of Public Works to come and speak on these projects, especially, for example, Waveney HVAC Systems Engineering.
That wasn't, that we discussed that at budget time.
I don't remember seeing a presentation on it. I remember talking about the money for the ADA. I, I'm sorry, I don't remember talking about air conditioning systems.
What it is, and he actually did present it. What it is, is the development and design of an HVAC system so that when, if the system fails at Waveney House, they have the ability to go right in to the new system. So that will not happen at Waveney House what happened at Lapham Community Center.
Okay.
Where it was the surprise that the, you know, furnace blew up.
Right.
And so there was, you know, a considerable amount of thrashing around to find an emergency backup trailer. And then, you know, time to redesign the system this way, if, if, and you know, it's a very old system at Waveney, that when, when it goes, they'll be ready to move right forward. And so that's what it is. It's merely a design.
So this is a design fee, not a construction fee?
Correct. Purely design.
Engineering design only.
Okay.
Is this for, because it says HVAC. Do we have AC in Waveney today? We do not, right?
Well, we have heating.
Right.
We don't have the AC part.
Right, so is this really looking at air conditioning?
Yes. And as to whether or not it then is at that time, a decision to put in air conditioning that will be decided at that time. But in the meantime, when they are designing the new system, because everything's in the pipes and the cement walls. And so this, my understanding is that it is going to be a kind of a two approach system from the, from the basement up to take care of the first floor and from the attic down to take care of the second floor.
All right, yeah, I do remember this because of the, the parallel with what happened at Lapham and how we wanted to avoid shooting ourselves in the foot again. Yes, I do, I do, thank you, Penny. I do remember that now that you say that.
Right, so, so this is the, you know, design of this system so that they can, you know, respond immediately when the thing blows up.
Hopefully not literally.
Right. Well, it practically did in town hall, which is why we have, you know, what we have, you know, the new thing at the town hall. Because that, that system actually did, you know, collapse.
Failed, yes. So what other projects here raises any flags for anybody as far as a presentation or discussion?
I think we had them all.
Well. Liz, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Um, Coward House and Carriage Barn, did we see, and I apologize, I was at the same meeting everybody else was. It just, I may, maybe I had to step out. Do we remember what's going on with that?
All right. Just to be clear, Tom, the, the Waveney House, 1.8 million is on the agenda, but not for, we're not voting on it, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so I don't, I mean, I think clearly that is the one issue that the Board of Finance is raising and maybe worth discussion. I don't know if we want to do that now, Christina or Penny, given that it's not something we're voting on tomorrow. But, you know, if I'm, I mean, obviously, that's the, the elephant in the room, correct?
Well, yes, unless somebody else has any other issues with anything that's on the list.
Yep. I, I went through them all. I, I didn't have any other issues since most of that was, everything else was, you know, well discussed during budget season.
Yeah, the, the 1.8 for, for Waveney House, I mean, it's, it's really kind of a, kind of a tricky discussion, shall I say. You know, if you're going to be able to use the building, we have got to be responding to ABA compliance. I mean, there's just no way around it now. And so if we now are going to have the Board of Finance say that they're not going to approve 1.8 million dollars for the ADA compliance until there's a use for the building, then we're going to have to shutter the building.
Well, that may, that may be the case, but it's, it would be unfair to not say that we had already approved a million. This is 1.8 in addition to that million.
I know that, I know. So we're going to, so they go ahead with the million in the bathrooms and just not do, you know, the other, the elevator and everything else.
Well, the other thing is that, to be honest, by them finally taking a stand, I mean, there have been those of us who have been asking for a couple of years, what is the plan for Waveney? We are sinking a ton of money into this. And it's really, you know, if, if it's going to be a wedding venue, then let that be said. Let us get someone to manage it. Let us get someone to make it the best star and wedding venue it can be. But I have never really heard anything defend, you know, can we look at the use of the building and say, what else? You know, I know currently we use it for meetings for various nonprofits. You know, it, it just doesn't seem very, you know, there's not really a good process that I'm aware of for, for what happens with it. And I'm actually glad that the Board of Finance took a stand because maybe it will force a decision as to how we move forward on it. I actually, I agree with them.
Well, then they're going to have to be willing to spend some money hiring a professional consultant to come in and look at that building. Because they're not taking any of the recommendations from any, over many years of subcommittees looking at that building. And, and I think there's a management, you know, staffing issue, attendance to that. You know, do you have the existing staff to do that kind of analysis at the level and in depth that it's going to take to really look at that building and come up with, knowing what the marketplace is and, you know, what you can do with a building like that?
Well, hiring a consultant is minimal in comparison to the amounts of money we're approving.
Yeah.
Or there are on the slate to be approved. So I think it would be a prudent thing for the town to do.
Yeah, just curiosity, what do you think the, and I know there's only three of us or four, whatever. And what do we think, what do you think the town would want to see us to do in the sense of, I mean, this is an iconic building, you know, I understand Penny's point, which is, you know, this hasn't been compliant for so long, so we should be putting in the money. Yet, you know, the timing of it is not great because of everything that's going on. And there are a lot of people that are a little bit more conservative than others on, on the, on the, on the financial health of the state and town. But what does the town want us to, what do you think town wants us to do? I'm curious, because it's not something that, this isn't a topic that I tend to talk to people with, like, on, as opposed to other issues.
Well, everybody's asking, what are they going to do with the building?
If we shut it, that's not, I don't think the town would want that. I guess that's, that's one, one question.
Well, I mean, hopefully, we can come up with a resolution without having to do that. But I think sometimes if you don't force the issue, you don't get change. I mean, two years ago, this came up in the question, when the first ADA million dollars came up. I mean, I'm the last person to be against ADA compliance. I mean, this is something we, we need to do. I get that. But it bothers me to have, to be pouring millions of dollars into a capital, you know, into a building that we are so vague about, what do we want to do with it? I mean, how do you force the issue otherwise? Otherwise, we're like, nothing is changing. There's no change.
No, I get it. Then, then let's do it. Let's, let's, you know, and, and today's excuse as to why there's no attention to hiring a consultant is because of the pandemic. Well, guess what? That's today's excuse. What was yesterday's excuse? Or last year's excuse, or the year before that, as to why we're not paying the kind of attention to it that we need to, you know?
As far as I know, consultants are still working and there shouldn't be an issue finding one or two.
Guess what? That's right. So go for it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, I mean, is that recommendation of this committee that, and that is something that, again, isn't that what the Board of Finance suggested as well?
Well, I think we can make a recommendation to town council, but let's take a vote. Who here believes that we need a consultant to come in and delineate what should be done with the building or how we should run the building in terms of programs or venues?
You know, there are just all kinds of, of people throwing out, you know, suggestions. I think it was Rich Townsend said, and Tom Butterworth said to me, well, why don't we just take, take Waveney House and make Waveney, the community center instead of Lapham and put all the building activities from Lapham over into Waveney House? And I said, oh my God. We just moved from Waveney House 20 years ago, you know, into Lapham.
And I think, Penny, to, to your point, I've heard someone suggest that, hey, maybe a private-
Restaurant or inn.
Or something on the private side that would generate more revenue for the town if they ran it and helped with the upkeep. I, I don't know, I do think, you know, there have been a lot of good ideas. I, I would be, I would be for hiring someone to look at this. I, I think it makes sense, assuming it's, it's not cost prohibitive, but-
Like Christina said, the millions and millions that have gone into this building that are scheduled to go into this building further. It seems penny wise and pound foolish to not spend, not to take a step back. Get someone impartial, who is, this is what they do. And, you know, take the emotion out of it and have that, have, you know, it's some, you know, go through that exercise.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree. Penny, do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, get on with it, for crying out loud. Stop talking and do it, you know?
Okay, so that will be a recommendation to town council to take a vote on it and make a recommendation to Kevin?
It's going to be a consensus agreement. Can't be a vote vote. It's not on, it's not on our agenda.
Okay. Sounds good enough to me.
And just to, oh, hold on. The question was asked about the level of revenue for Waveney. And that is something that, that we should be able to get. I know it's known. And that's the kind of thing that's going to come up when you have someone outside, impartial, come in to look into this. Is that, that's, that's definitely a question that has to be asked and answered. Is, you know, what are we doing today? What kind of revenue are we getting today? And, you know, if we keep going that direction, you know, how do we get there? And how do we, you know, is that the direction we want to keep going? And if we do, what, what can we see in, in terms of a return?
Well, I think that we need somebody to come in with the expertise. It's its highest and best use would be 1, 2, 3, 4, however many. And the cost or the revenues can be projected to reach a certain level. And I think that that's part of the consideration. And then we'll feel more comfortable in voting in for improvements beyond ADA or repairs.
Well, I think it, it's got some tininess to it and as well as further discussion. Does that building really need to be a revenue generator to the town? I mean, that's a philosophical, you know, public policy thing for the, for the town. I mean, if, if you want it to be revenue generating more than it is, then that's one set of uses. If it doesn't have to be revenue generating, that's something else, you know?
Just be, you know, what's, what's the best we can do, understand, you know? I don't think anybody realistically-
Liz, we can't hear you.
I wonder, that is so weird. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, when you're closer, yes.
That's, I'm sorry, I don't usually, you know, I'll have to turn up my volume. It's not usually an issue. Again, I don't think that our consensus, I shouldn't speak for all of us. I would say for myself, I'm not looking to make that, to make it a, I'm not expecting it to pay for itself. I just feel like it's sort of, I just feel like we should do the best we can with it. They're balancing maybe competing objectives, but I just don't get the feeling that, I feel like we're kind of flying blind and we're just doing what we've always done. And, you know, I think we could do it better.
Agreed, but you know, as we're putting in more and more money into Waveney, the other consideration is, are we appropriately using the building? Should we have camp in the building?
No.
Activities that may not-
Can I just ask that the public not, I mean, we, we gave comments to the public. They probably shouldn't just be blurting things out.
Mark, are you saying somebody's speaking and I'm not hearing them?
Yeah, no, I just keep hearing like comments that I don't think are coming from anyone. And as I'm trying to take notes, I, I just want to be clear that, you know, the public was given minutes in the beginning, not, not to just make comments as we're having a discussion.
Correct, maybe Tom can mute them.
I don't know that there's, there's been any extraneous comments, Mark. It's, it's just been Liz and myself.
Okay, just.
What do you want me to do?
There are chats coming up.
There are? I haven't heard them. Who else, who else?
Everybody be, should be on mute unless they're talking. Okay, I'll watch, I'll watch for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
There's chat, there's something going on in the chat.
I, I think, I think we're all in consensus mode that we need to move forward with what the conversation was at the Board of Finance, that there needs to be a consultant hired to really look at the best use of that building. It might be particularly timely as the library is designing their building. Say, for instance, they're designing all kinds of meeting rooms. Do they need to put into their building, meeting rooms when we have Waveney House as meeting space? You know, and, and that, that could, you know, alter how they design their space. If we are thinking that community organizations could have much more of a presence around Waveney House and all of the different sized rooms, we have all the different closets. We, all the old bathrooms that aren't going to be used as bathrooms can be storage rooms for some of their equipment. You know, it could be a much more active community use for our organizations. If that's, you know, kind of a direction we want to go, obviously, that's not revenue generating other than maybe, you know, minimal assessment, say, for janitorial, you know, support or something. So, but I think those are all comments and ideas that we should get underway, having more serious conversation about.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. So I got to agree with Penny. I don't think that the building necessarily has to be a revenue generator. I think the town has plenty of buildings that aren't revenue generating. And, you know, buildings that we put money into. Liz, I mean, you know, we've got your dad's, you know, pool house, you know, that we pour money into and doesn't really serve much of a purpose, except that it's a beautiful historic building and we need to keep it. And I think Waveney fits in the same category. And I think that the building is used, excuse me, I'm speaking. Okay, I think that Waveney House, you know, serves some real purposes, you know, as far as supporting town nonprofits, you know, as a meeting hall. And I think that's a good purpose for it to continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sven. Liz, did you want to add anything?
No, I just wanted to make the point that the, since Sven decided to mention the Goris Pavilion, that the, the allocation in the budget for, I believe, the gutters was the first money the town has put into that building since it became part of, you know, since it was acquired along with Urban Park. That's so, you know, and it's, and I get, again, I'm not trying to say that we should turn Waveney into a restaurant and, you know, look to make cloakoo bucks. I just think we could be doing more. And again, to Penny's point, can we try and do more to make sure that we are using all that space as effectively as we can to serve all the different interests in town, the nonprofits, et cetera?
And for me, this goes back to the library. I mean, if we're spending 1.8 million dollars on upkeep of Waveney, which, as that building, the building's large, it's going to require more money going forward. And we're going to have a debate as to the operating budget of the library. You know, if you were to take the temperature of the town, again, I asked the question I asked earlier, what does the town want us to do? You know, what is, what, what, what does the majority want? And I don't know, that's the part I, I struggle with because I feel like the library has a lot of momentum. I don't know if this 1.8, just to make it ADA compliant, people are getting as much out of the building. Aesthetically, it's beautiful and it'll always be there, but what does the town want us to do?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if that, if, if we need to ask the wider questions through the press as to in the public. That would be-
No, no, I, that was a rhetorical, it's just, you know, these are things that I'm thinking about, just like Sven is reflecting. That's what I think about. If I were to vote on a 1.8 million dollar bonding right now of it, I'm not, I'm not sure I'd be in favor of it if, but if a consultant told me, or told us that there's a lot of use in the building, then, you know, I think it's, it's, it's worth hearing it. But with so many different things that the town wants to do right now, I think everyone has to weigh things. And I'm cer, I certainly am.
Agreed.
Mark, I'll speculate that the library will have 20 times more people visiting on a daily basis than Waveney ever does, just to put that in perspective.
That's, thanks, thanks, Tom. Yeah, no, I, I agree, yeah, the library is a-
I would imagine that the great majority of people in town have never even been in Waveney House.
Okay, so any other issues, comments, ideas?
I will, I will comment that there is somewhat of a time consideration on this 1.8 million. And Tiger can speak to that. The contract that has been offered to the town by the outfit that did the roof and some of the other repair work on Waveney House, they have given the town a very attractive bid. bid to do, you know, this work. And I think that timeframe has been extended to go past our July, or at least the Board of Finance's July date. And so then it vanishes, so the number will come in greater than 1.8 if we don't, you know, take the the contract right now. So I think, you know, that's another consideration as to whether or not that that's something that, you know, people feel they need to respond to in the way of accepting the contract proposal or not. You know, that's the decision that's being made.
Right now, the Board of Finance hasn't approved it, so it's a limbo.
No, but Tiger was able to get the contract extended past so that the Board of Finance will be able to vote in their July meeting on whether or not they will or won't accept the contract.
Okay. Any further comments?
Well, the way this question is going to come up is, do we, as a town, do we say, for instance, that as long as somebody agrees to hire a consultant, that we'll spend the 1.8 million dollars? Or do we use this as an opportunity to say, well, no, 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 that we're really uncomfortable about the current use of Waviney House being inadequate. No more big checks until we resolve this. And so in that, if you take that approach, it doesn't matter whether the contractor has reduced its cost.
Right.
We'd have to come up with a plan first.
That is actually what the recommendation was from the Advisory Committee, the Selectmen's Advisory Committee on Infrastructure Projects, was that the recommendation to the Board of Finance was to approve the 1.8 with the understanding that a consultant would be hired. So.
But a consultant would be hired after the fact.
Well, remember, this this is second phase work at Waviney House. It's not going to start until, I guess what what will start, once the contract is signed, is that the actual design of the elevator will be underway. Because that's the second phase, the first phase being the bathrooms on the second floor.
Why will the bathrooms cost a million dollars? Because when we had the committee, that the prices were never brought up.
I don't think the bathrooms are costing a million. I think in that million is some of the design work on the on the elevator, be it the structural stuff in the basement and the attic. Frankly, Christine, I'm not actually sure on what's totally in the 1 million dollars.
Okay. So maybe that's a question for Tiger to answer at the next town council meeting, but it's not on the agenda, but it can be a clarification.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any further comments?
Christina, just just to be clear for notes, that was, we're going to ask Tiger.
To clarify.
Clarify that the one, or why it's costing that much? Okay.
Where where the 1 million that was previously approved is being spent on specific.
Right.
Okay, what's next on the agenda, cell tower?
Yes.
I don't think we know anything about cell towers.
I don't think so either. But it's there just in case. Gas, water, sewer? I don't have.
I'll just, can I just make a comment about the cell towers?
Yeah.
As a commuter, and I know there was a lot of frustration with commuting, you know, the MTA, and that's obviously not something the town itself can solve, but I I think that issue is going to be less talked about going forward as more people have the flexibility to work from home. I think the cell tower issue is really going to be a problem. People are still upset about it. So, you know, I think, I think it's something we should be hearing more about, even through this crisis. That's just a comment I wanted to make.
And we request an update from the first selectman for our meeting? Is that appropriate?
Well, he's going to speak, he'll hopefully he says something about it, but I don't know. Probably not going to say anything different than he said to the Board of Finance.
I can see where the cell tower is going to be even more important to have resolved as people are at home.
I agree 100% with you.
Yeah, it's 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 actually been a very interesting observation. I sit on the statewide Commission on Women, Children, and Seniors, and as we have done an analysis of response to, you know, COVID, the the representative from the northwest corner of Connecticut said, you know, listening to how everyone in the southwest corner of Connecticut has responded to this crisis, you have really been dependent upon broadband and cell service. And all of us up in the Northwest don't have it, or when we do have it, it's not reliable. And so their abilities to connect with people have really been severely limited. And so then it launched into discussion about should this be a statewide project, almost responsibility to provide the technology that is going to be present in today's world.
I agree with the discussion.
You know, so I could see where it's going to be even more important.
So it almost brings up the issue, we ought to decide sooner rather than later, the state will decide it for us, whether we like it or not.
Right.
Okay, any, any issues with water, gas, and sewer? Any thoughts?
I think that I think we'll be getting an update from the first selectman on what's happening with the gas line.
Tom, do you have gas connection already? Yes, you, Tom.
Yes, I do.
You do? Good. No regrets?
No.
Good.
I I have it too, Christina, and no regrets.
Where where are you in town?
I'm off of South Avenue.
Oh, okay.
So I I think I I was one of the first to get hooked up. And it it's great, you know, not having, not having to worry about deliveries when you're, when it's freezing out and having your oil tank drop to like below an eighth of a tank. This is, this, it's a different world.
No panic.
Yeah, no panic.
And the prices, I'm sure, will be better than what we've seen with oil.
Well, it's interesting. I I think I, you know, I I have to examine it, but you know, it's hard because I'm not, I haven't looked, I haven't done an analysis of how much I'm spending. My electricity bill is still the bigger issue, so the the gas bill is not, not, not as substantial. So it's hard for me to quantify it without doing the analysis.
Well, I can't wait to turn our roads into solar. This way, it'll generate the electricity for everybody.
There you go.
So, okay, not to, I don't want to extend the meeting beyond where we need to be. So any other issues? One last thing I'd like for everybody to think about is, in present, in the presentations from the Department of Public Works, or the Board of Ed, or anybody else doing projects throughout town, what would we like to see presented? Do you feel that an operations projection, operations cost projection would be productive to have prior to approving some of the projects? Any other expenses? Should we have an option to say, let's put solar, or let's do a certain level of leads to reduce operational costs on a building? Because that's not part of our conversation right now. When projects are being presented and put forward, there's no consideration whatsoever on operational cost going.
Oh, oh, Christina, I think they are very aware of operational costs in our buildings.
We've asked the library and they told us that, you know, it will not, you know, that having the new building will result in so many efficiencies that the operations cost will be flat.
They don't know that.
It's not the case in Richfield, and it's not the case in Darien. It's a nice thought, but you're increasing the footprint of the building so much that I don't see how you're going to realize the same cost across.
I don't either.
Well, they're on the record.
Yes, they are.
But when we renovated and built the addition on Laughlin Community Center, we were told by our consultants that our utility costs were going to go down, particularly oil. Well, guess what? The oil went down because we had a brand new furnace, but what did not go down was the electric, and it doubled practically because it is a building used by the community, and the air exchange in the rooms must change every five, five times every hour, which means your electric is on 100% of the time.
So maybe maybe we need to look and consider when approving a building or prior when it's in the drafting form, what what efficiencies will be created in the design to either maintain or reduce the operational cost? Any thoughts? No thoughts?
Christina, I think those decisions are are the libraries.
Well, I'm not talking about the library, I'm talking about any project in town.
Christina, as I said, I really think that all the departments are very, very conscious of what their bills are, you know, be it their light bill, their oil bill, their water bill, whatever. And do anything and everything possible, you know, with the existing technologies that then don't cost you more and it takes you a, you know, considerable payback time. I I think they're conscientious about that.
Christina, are you, are you saying that you just want to make sure that as projects come forward, that the future cost of operations is considered and?
Yes, yes. And what brought it up to mind was a meeting that happened on the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, where there was requests to put in a new roof, but there was no discussion on including solar. And I think that if the town does it, the Board of Ed will follow. But I think it's important to look at ways to be more efficient and to look out for the operational cost. And the library is, you know, is a different set of parameters because they're independent. But I think by the same token, if we're contributing 10 million dollars, we should have a say, like Penny said, on its use and how many rooms may be redundant and how to create the best efficiencies. So somebody has to raise the question or propose it as a direction, alternative.
No, Christina, I I don't disagree with you. I think the whole, once we have an MOU and understand what the town is getting in terms of seats, you know, we all agreed that we're asking for seats on both their building committee and on the, at the board level, then, you know, that's what's most important to us at the, on the town council. And I think that we all agree that these issues will be brought up when appropriate. I guess what I struggle with now is how do we, how do we, how do we discuss that without knowing what our representation is going to be?
Well, we we are going to have to discuss some of the important issues that we find significant enough prior to the MOU being signed, regardless of how many people sit in the building committee or on the board, because I hate to say it, by the time this committee gets put through, the goose is going to be cooked. They're working on the drawings now. They have their preliminary, it's there, so there are a lot of issues. But I think that at least if we hit the primary points, it forces the hand to consider them, where if we don't say anything, anything goes.
Do you have a list of things that, that's, you know, that that you want to put together that we could bring up through the town council? Maybe that, maybe we should, maybe we start with a list as opposed to, you know, that's important to this committee, and then, you know, maybe we move from there. Again, I don't.
I'll be happy to share a list of things that should be included in the design or at the very least considered. And I gave John Engel a copy of that many months back, so I'm happy to share it, I'll send it around.
Okay. Again, and and this, I think, goes back to what Steve Carr was saying in the town council meeting. Aren't a lot of the issues that you're, that we're talking about probably going to be addressed at planning and zoning anyway, or?
Well, planning and zoning has the authority to regulate on zoning regulations. They don't have the power to tell you what the building should look like unless it's is infringing on the regulations. They don't have the right to say, put solar in the building. There's no regulation that says you must. There is parking. There is a big discussion whether or not parking should be part of the MOU, that parking should be provided to align with the zoning regulations. Well, the issue is, if the town is going to have to spend a couple of million dollars in the storm lines and in the sewer lines, the question is, is the town going to push aside the parking requirements to now have to face another 2.5, 5, or 10 million dollars to do that work? So by the same token, if the library is not given the parking mandate to provide parking for X amount of cars, does that mean that we're giving away center school lot, or that we're giving away Morse Court? And how is that going to impact the buildings and the employees of those businesses in town? There's a lot of things to consider, and I just, I just don't think that that's up to planning and zoning. I think it has to be part of our MOU, the parking must be provided.
You know, it was my impression from our town council meeting recently that we talked about parking, and the sense of the council was to defer that question to planning and zoning. If we had, if we had wanted parking to be a distinct issue in the MOU, we should have said so at the, at last month's meeting.
We did, and it was part of the original MOU, at least from what I was told. But it has been pushed aside to be left to be decided upon by planning and zoning.
Right, but we didn't, the town council didn't, did not as a group object to that outcome. That was the time, that was the time when we would have asserted ourselves if we were going to, so.
Who's going to decide parking if planning and zoning doesn't?
Who's what?
Who's going to decide parking if P&amp;Z doesn't?
I think what Christina's saying is that you could be specific and and require the library and the MOU to have X spaces underground. But we, that was before, that was being, that was discussed in in the meeting, and nobody proposed to, to put that as a condition in the MOU.
I I I did not agree to it. I don't. I did not agree to it. I don't remember the verbiage of the conversation exactly, but I don't think that we were all unanimously for leaving it to PNC.
But we didn't put it to a vote, so it's not going to be in the MOU.
So let me, so let me give you an example. Right now, we have parking on site at the library. If we were to turn all that parking to green, that would be green open space. So what the library is saying, if they don't put the parking below ground, is that we're not going to provide any parking. We'll just put grass and we'll call it a green. And you, the town, decide where we're going to put all these cars. I think it's a very responsible way for a building in the center of town to be designed. And it sets a precedent for any other building that's built in the center of town. So, but anyway, the discussion was that the MOU is still being worked on and we're going to see it in the very near future.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Town buildings, why? Anything?
Nope.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mark?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, see you Wednesday.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye. Thank you, everybody.
So long.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.